Okay.
Camera's way too sharp.
How can your hand is backwards?
This is the way it runs. No, seriously, that's what the camera's look.
That's really good now. All right. Now, we call a meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. In the Selectmen's Office, April fifth, twenty twenty one, six P M. The meeting is being conducted remotely per Governor Baker's order of March twenty twenty due to the COVID uh emergency. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone recording the meeting besides us? Raise your hand, signal in some other appropriate manner. Right, thank you. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the March twenty second regular meeting.
And this is just, I think, if you go back to earlier meetings, we should get back in the habit of uh listing who's in attendance at the time of the minute. We're getting interference here from.
There, I'm on there, but.
You know, everybody else.
You want an executive session?
We're doing the regular first.
We're doing the regular first.
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
Okay, oh, the twenty, oh, that one.
Okay. Okay.
We can have the contract if you want.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I don't know what I did wrong.
I'm sorry, what was the problem with your record?
She said, no, she wanted that in, but they can get the contract at the end anyhow, so.
We always do it very generic, but. General discussion of.
Again, I don't think that's correct.
I don't.
I thought we were gonna be consistent with the five that everybody gets.
Right.
Right.
All right, so let's do the regular one first.
Right.
So we're gonna add from now, we're gonna add the president to meeting.
In physically present.
President physically present.
Uh, they look pretty good. Nice to see so quickly. I make a motion to approve.
One favor.
All right.
Okay, well, the executive minutes of March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
I really would like to get that review, just if we could pass on this until we've really got clarity on that long sentence. This is what makes a good point on that.
Yeah.
And I really think we were clear that we were gonna be consistent now. Can we pass this to next week? Okay.
Collins, compensation study, step recommendations. Okay.
Before we get to step recommendations, I um, the categories, the. We found. Great. The great, we, we, we did change them last week, but I'm wondering if that's appropriate, if we should revisit that and go with exactly what Collins recommended. Then, all the town employees have the opportunity to fill out their forms and then everybody of the documents that they had to, and to make further changes if they wanted to. And I think it's for us to, for us to change it is a little um inconsistent with what we thought, what we charged Collins in doing and um may, may underlie validity to me a little bit. We changed, um, we changed four, four categories, and there are something with forty something categories, forty something different positions involved. So we didn't change it globally, but we did change, we did make specific changes. People that didn't get changed might also have a concern and didn't come forward or whatever, so it's just the safest option to me seems to be, and the, and the most accurate one seems to be to say, let's go with the Collins then.
But I thought we were pretty consistent. We took a, we actually looked at some jobs that nobody had come forward for, and in our experience. Because Collins does paint with a broad brush, but they don't know exactly what happens in this small town. And I think fortunate that we have a board that does get into the nitty gritty and knows what these people do. So I thought we had a pretty good discussion on it, and I thought we were pretty committed to, okay, the way these jobs work, they have more responsibility than Collins may think in Brimfield or Ethel or Holland or whatever. You know, it can't be one, one solution for everybody.
But it does, it does um almost, almost everybody who works in an organization could say, well, I think I was undervalued, or I think this person wasn't valued correctly or whatever.
Nobody ever says overvalued, you're right.
Yeah, I was gonna say overvalued, but no, that's not the case. Um, it just seems to me it's cleaner and easier and more consistent with what we ask them to do. And um, you know, so. I would um, and, and then you don't have, you haven't picked people out that you think are are being mis-served by this thing. Everybody's got the same chance. I don't know, what do you think, John?
Well, uh. I think the Collins, they, they pointed out that every, the thing that they're developing the salary schedule, they said, you know, when evaluating classifications, it's important to remember that each municipal this value is different in comparability. But the argument is just important, if not more so, an external comparability. As above mentioned, the different positions in place and tiles used can make true comparisons difficult. And developing the recommendation salary of the council to to less the positions and establish a salary range, the salary range was established by the county. So, I mean, they, we have some leeway to change it. And then, of course, what's happening now is, you know, every week we get three more, you know, three more input on salary classification grade and uh you know, so I think we need to put it into it. Uh, because the timing is coming, and if this continues, no one's gonna get anything, it's become, we're gonna come and go.
Well, what, what, what Colin spoke to was the salary part, but not the, but not the grades, and the grading is, is where we really made the change. We haven't even discussed the salary part. I mean, that may indeed complicate the whole matter of work, but um, it, it just.
I don't know, I've gone back and forth on it, and I had a long discussion with the treasurer on it, and um he made a point about it being invalidating the entire uh compensation survey, which I disagree with. I think when you put a lot of time and effort into these things, there's gonna be changes to be made.
Except that the people have the opportunity to make the change themselves. You know, they got, they got the first write-up, and then they got that back, and then they could make the change to the second, to the write-up, so, you know, but.
Well, I'm comfortable with our actions, so we didn't go, we didn't run, we didn't run roughshod through the entire thing. I think we did a pretty measured approach to certain positions, but we had a pretty good discussion last week about it as well. And like Don said, sooner or later, we gotta fish a cut bait here and move on.
I, I, I did talk to the library director, and she had concerns.
She wrote a letter here, right? She wrote a letter.
Okay, and she had concerns. Because she had just accepted what was, what was given here, and she said, I, I just accepted it. And then, um, when she saw people was having the opportunity to make changes, she said, well, maybe I should be making changes too. So, I mean, I just think it opens that whole second guessing of, of town.
So, would the library director be satisfied that we moved everyone back?
What do you mean move on that?
Well, if we said, okay, we're not gonna change everybody.
Well, she would, she would have agreed to, everybody got the same agreement, you know what I mean? Is what she's saying, I think.
I think one of the things that, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that at least I approached this now without looking at who's in the position. I just looked at the position.
Oh, that's, that's.
I'm afraid that some of the people are looking at who's in the position. And I think that's unfortunate. So, we, and I put it there, I saw it today.
Even, even like when you look at the administrative clerk, you raised, you raised the cemetery.
That's it.
You don't raise the police administrative clerk. Are they all more or less the same?
I don't know.
That's why we shouldn't, we shouldn't be changing any of them.
No, I, I mean, I'd have to look at every single job description again to prepare it. All right, wanna make a motion, change it back? I'm fine.
I make a motion that we change that.
I'm tired, I'm tired of it, so.
The original classifications of recommended grades for employees that outlined in the talent report.
Any second. I'll second it. All in favor? All right, so I'm going back. What, what's so, can we get on with your story, Bob?
Okay. There are, Collins recommended twelve steps for the new system. And treasure and I sat down today, and the question was, is there a fair and impartial way to assign steps uh to each employee? And what standards will we use? Well, one standard would be longevity. In other words, the step that we put you on to start the new system would reflect longevity. Is there something else? Well, there are some employees who are certified in their uh profession. Uh, I think that's another, we could use a step raise, a step increase to encourage that. Uh, beyond that, uh pretty hard to come up with something, something else that's objective. Uh, I think that we ought to have step raises every other year, not every year. And that step raise ought to be tied to the department head or uh the board or committee making an evaluation of the person that works there. That way, if the board or committee doesn't get around to doing it, the employee, I think, will remind them, I don't get a step raise until you do the evaluation. So I think that's the way of introducing a system of regular evaluation of all of us. Lastly, um, the issue of colas presents a problem. If you look at the step raises, step raises are roughly, or almost exactly, two percent for each step. The town's revenue increases in the range of three percent a year. Sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. If we raise total compensation above three percent a year, somebody's gonna get shortchanged. So, so some other, some activity of the town is going to get shortchanged if we go above the approximate three percent increase in revenue every year. Blending colas and step raises, I think is um that's the question.
Well, you were talking about doing a step raise every other year. Would you suggest an cola in the off year?
Uh, that would be one way to do it, yes. We need to do colas because a cola will raise the bottom step, so that your, your chart will increase gradually over time to reflect increasing salaries in the market. So, unless we do that, unless we have colas on a regular basis, then the chart's gonna become obsolete in a couple of years. So, that, that, that will certainly uh uh enable this chart to, to be valuable for a period of years. I think step raises every other year, and then either no colas uh in the odd year or uh very modest colas, you know, if, if it's a two percent increase in a step raise, go a one percent cola. And then in the other year, you could do, you could do a three or something like that.
Oh, you're saying you could, you're, you're thinking of doing cola plus step and then solely cola.
Solely cola, yeah. Uh, and this, of course, doesn't include the collective bargaining unit. Their, their wage will be according to contract, as well as the contracted department mix. So, it would be basically employees in the town hall, employees in the highway department. And uh uh the, the permanent firefighters.
I thought when you were, when uh Mary was talking about the, the current step in how to go to a new step, she was referring to migrating straight across, much, much like we did before, where if this person is at currently eighteen fifty an hour. And on the new chart, there's an eighteen sixty-five, they would go that eighteen sixty-five. So they'd never go down, but they would just move to whichever. And then the option would be, do the step first and then move, or after, and that's personal choice.
And periodically, we'd have to evaluate the grades. You know, I use the old way that we used to refer to that steps in lane, or the yeah, steps in lanes, and then you jump from one lane to another, maybe in some cases, if your job uh suddenly requires a lot more skill, uh the state provides a lot more regulations for the work you do and so forth. But you, you'd have to periodically have a look at the grade levels for each position. Uh, and then the step, the step system, I think, would take care of the rest of it, keep you current.
So, you, you, and John's example, yours, John's example was, I'm making eighteen fifty. I would go to eighteen sixty-five this year, and then go down to nineteen this year.
Will you go to the next highest number that's our, our new step then? Or, or would you give the bumper and then do the migration over? Like I said, you can do either. Does it mean, do they get a raise this year? Okay, fine, everybody gets the two percent on their number. And then you migrate them into the next spot, slide them into the next slot of.
This year, right, so they potentially can get four percent.
Well, no, no, only if, I mean, say, no, say they make the eighteen fifty.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna make another thirty-seven shot.
Right.
Okay, it's not eighteen eighty-seven. And then the next spot on the chart is eighteen ninety-eight. That's what they go to. So they got, in effect, maybe a three, maybe a three percent, or, you know. There's no, 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 there's not a bump after the bump.
The beginning of the process has to be a good estimate of town revenue. You know, it's, what, what, what level of town revenue will increase this year? Uh, so we have a new solar application, so there's additional revenue, maybe it might be three and a half percent. But I think in general, over time, you don't want to go above in your wage increases and salary increases above the increase in revenue. Otherwise, you, you're just looking for trouble down the road.
So, do you have then suggestions going forward for, do you wanna map out this chart and say, okay, these are the current things? This is if everybody gets a two percent or whatever the board decides. And then they're gonna slide into, this person will be a three eight, this person will be a four two.
If you're agreeable to this scheme, uh, we'll put everybody into a step system for next week.
Do we apply a bumper?
Well, do we have, do we have to get a feeling for what is the range of increases?
It's two percent.
Yeah, but, but when they get the step, so, so, so what is that range? Once, two percent plus the step, does that mean that some people are gonna get five percent raise, and some people are gonna get two percent raise?
No, no, what are you, no, you're saying there's two built into the steps, each step is about two percent off.
Okay, so they get a two percent increase because of the step?
No, if, if they were on the step currently, but we're not doing that this year. They're doing a two percent raise on the current number, and then slot over to whatever step is there. There's no moving from that step.
For next year, they will get the two percent plus.
Right, because we have.
Plus whatever the cost of living will be that we, that we're gonna put in. So they might get a four percent raise, or they might get a two percent raise, or there wouldn't be any constancy, right? It would be, everybody gets a different rate, a, a little bit different, potentially a different.
Oh, it might be different by a few, everyone will be different by a few cents, but I think the cola has been just about one percent lately, though. Well, not much.
Yeah, cost of living increase has been very low.
Very low.
One to one point five.
Except that we're gonna use this system hopefully for years to come, so one percent this year might be four percent next year, or you won't know, really. I mean, it won't be four percent next year, but, you know, five years from now.
That would really affect.
Um, and the other thing is.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, for him.
Let's take this year. This person's making fourteen fifty.
Is that the selectmen's number?
Let's just look. The fourteen fifty. We would, we would say, okay, you're gonna get a two percent raise this year, which would be roughly thirty cents, right? Which brings you to uh fourteen eighty. They would go here.
Right.
Starting next year.
Right. They'd slide into whatever.
Right, so next year, they, we have this.
Now they're on the chart.
On the chart.
And next year, if we decide to step here, and they just go up to.
Or we can decide it's a cola year.
And ship the whole chart.
So we could change it either in a year.
Right. So one year would be a cola year, and one year would be a step year.
And so this, this year, this coming year, fiscal twenty-two, you have to decide, do you want to, we're gonna put people on the chart.
After a step or not, after a bump or not.
Yeah, right.
So, now, you came up with an estimate, ballpark, and a real off-the-cuff or whatever, what it would cost to put people on the chart.
Right.
And I don't know if that factored in, because it seemed like a pretty huge number.
Twenty-eight thousand.
And the year that we did, this year is back to try and resolve people, what we thought were inequities, we did a four percent bump, and it cost the town eight thousand. So I'm kinda wondering where the twenty-eight comes from.
Thirty-three thousand. Thirty-three thousand.
Is that a cost?
That's thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twelve.
Not the four, four percent.
Yeah.
Oh, no, sorry, it was one percent.
One percent was eight thousand, right?
Right, so that's what I'm wondering, how we get to twenty-eight.
Town meeting voted four percent.
Right. Do we have more people being affected by this than we figured last time? Is that part of the thing? At that point, it was just the town.
Because there's higher pay.
Possible too. But I think from what we saw with our discussion, and what people saw last week, as we talked about, twenty-eight thousand. It's not a huge number in the town budget. We're seeing twice that in savings in the school budget. School budget's dropping by almost sixty thousand dollars. The requested budget, yeah. So, it's more of a, I don't think we're talking about the expense of the town, we're talking about our policy, our perception, how we're doing.
Are we addressing the um, the areas where people are, are according to the survey underpaid or?
I would look for recommendations from Bob and that. If he's our H R person, you know.
I, I think we should.
Yes, I do too.
I think we should, particularly with the library, because that, that, that's where major gap was. Yeah, we'll come back next week with numbers, if you agree on this approach.
Just as an aside, the Holyoke, they read where the Holyoke was doing the same thing, and they were appalled by how little they were paying their, their library people too.
Yeah, library is initially one of the four of me.
Well, that's common just about everywhere.
Well, two departments that really never came back after the great closure of uh oh-four, there's libraries and year's. Uh, so we're, so, just to wrap up, are we directing Bob with a, a bump this year, and then slot them into the next thing, and then come back with recommendations on any validated adjustments?
Out of the ballpark.
So you're recommending changes on this?
So we're recommend, first off, are we saying, yes, everyone gets a bump this year?
Yeah.
On their current number.
Right.
Bob then slot them into the chart.
Yeah.
But for those positions that you feel have a case for adjustment, please bring them back to that board.
And then we don't adjust cost of living at all.
Not this year, we're doing a bump in.
That's fair.
A bump and a slot up is pretty much.
That's fair, it's fair.
And, you know, there are twelve steps. So you'd go through all the steps if you're a twenty-four-year employee.
Well, the cola thing is very smart, because that gives, that gives the steps lighter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And right now, I guess we have one employee who's twenty-four years.
Well, probably Rudy is, like I said, Rudy is, I think, at the top step plus eight roughly, and you're plus six or something, aren't you? I think in Hamza, either plus five or plus six, I think, over the top step at this point, so. There are some people that have been serving the town for quite a while.
All, all of these should probably go to fifteen, which is gonna be the minimum wage in twenty twenty-three anyhow. All right, so we're all set? We're all set on that? Getting Zoom bombed, or? I guess. We're gonna continue to review of the budget, Warren article.
Do you have a copy of the latest version of the budget being used by the advisory committee? Have the Warren articles as well.
I thought Kathy Passaloon did a pretty good reading of the numbers last week, and I think letting them punch in the salary numbers before we do another flow through the budget is probably warranted at this point.
Yeah, first I have, anyone done the answer to? Fifty fifty-nine. Nine.
Power charge?
What?
Communication tower?
Yeah, yeah. When did they get to sixty thou, what's that from? Was that, did they take it out, was there a line items in the, in the police and the fire, the communication, but where?
Well, we had the, the former radio charge, and I thought this is taking place of what we're having to pay for now, would be the new radio system and rental, etc. Was this like five thousand a month? Roughly? Yeah.
So that, that wouldn't include the twenty-four thousand?
It doesn't?
For the tower? I don't know, that's what I need to find out.
Good question.
We're gonna find.
I don't see the twenty-four anywhere else, so.
Yeah, no, I know, so I don't know if it includes that or not. So Bob checked it out after. Okay, and then we just, we have to put in the, we can put in the, we can, we can fill in the chief salary, you know that, Mark. And, and the incentive, and the uh Quinn bill, right? We know what that number is.
Yeah, Kathy gets, she calculates that and passes it back to us.
Yeah, and then we got uh, and the other thing, then we have to plug in the salary number, that's just about it, really. Or we can just leave it like it is, and we would save two million and then we'd.
I'll make sure that we get the, that squared away, the, the new, new, the cost of the tower and the chief salary.
That is an impressive reduction in the total budget.
We have a lot of people joining the meeting tonight.
The stocks definitely not beyond.
We wanna do a.
Yeah. So walking through the warrant, didn't see much. The only thing I see missing, and I don't think we've talked, but um, Marilyn, do you have anything for the enterprise fund yet? Because advisory asked us, uh, you know, you know, they need to know if there's gonna be a, an appropriation for that.
And I think on that, we know we have a, isn't there an increase in the contract from McNair?
Yeah, but that's still, that's still inside the treasure of the enterprise fund.
There is.
Yeah.
Right, and also, is there, is there also a increase in the MRF, too? That contract?
Uh, I'll have to look at that. I, I don't remember what I'll have to look at that, I don't remember what the term for big for next year.
And does it, do our full-time firefighters, are they under contract or they have a?
No.
No.
No, nothing, so they're going to fall into the.
Now, some of that number, you saw the, the numbers for that, some of that includes the stipends for the officers, and that's why that number is so much higher, right? Oh my gosh, one thirty-eight off of one seventy, because we added the stipend for the deputy chief and all kinds of stuff. Remember, you were doing the math and all of a sudden they had up to twenty-five dollars off. It was in the auditorium, I think, last year, Marilyn, wasn't it? And we're all like doing the.
Was that the regular?
No.
No.
No, I'm saying we did a, Ed came in with a suggestion for the different officers for lieutenant. So that's why that number is up because it includes the. Officers stipends that they do. I don't think, we haven't seen a number from the school for the school resource officer, have we? We did, I seriously think, and I think I brought it up last year, we should be getting a reduction of that number because it had to be. A month or two months when there was no more resource officer in New York and paid for, basically we paid for the full year, we need some of the money back, just like the transportation. No, it's not much, but it's the right thing. CPA articles, is that on your agenda or no?
Yeah, I, I made the changes in the CPA articles that you had suggested. I removed two out of the three.
Yeah, but those weren't the, but you didn't add the others.
I don't, no, I don't have the others.
I think Doug will send them, we have another meeting on this Thursday. And we mentioned, we have one request from historical for. Kind of a delineation or mapping of town, it's difficult to explain, but the committee felt that it was. It's their right to explain at the town meeting. So, and go for that, good luck for them, good luck, the other one is. Housing authority is looking for some CPA money to do some fixing up work of water issues at Spring Meadow. Parks and Rec was looking for two sources, one for basically tree management. And the other was a drainage problem behind the softball field, third base, coming down off the mountain, and then it all been snoggy back there. The board felt that the tree work was not proper for CPA, it's really more maintenance. And it should be worked out between park and the tree warding, but the one-time capital work for like putting a curtain drain in or a plate with a four foot. So those are the three articles they will be presenting.
When you close the warrant tonight, we'll close it with the, the anticipation of. CPC articles, but all of that.
Well, yeah, but they're not separate articles per se, they're all in the. So when you close, you don't need to. Right, and if the board chooses to leave the couple of one in, that's our choice here, I mean, hey. You don't have to take it off right now because it's not detailed, you don't need to provide the detail in the warrant right now, we can get some calls and figure what we're doing. The CPA committee is certainly willing to entertain any request for that.
How much was the school resource again? Eleven all three four?
Right about that every year.
All right, anything else on the warrant or the sergeant, next week we'll hopefully be able to pull the numbers in. Next item on the agenda is the. Oak Knoll Drive residence issue, on that particular issue. I've been advised by the legal counsel, our legal counsel. That I have an appearance of a conflict because I live on the street and I'm, I'm within two hundred feet of the residents in question.
But you're not the nuisance.
So the, the town council has suggested that I recuse myself from the discussion on this matter, which I'll do.
This is a little more detailed. Do, do not screen share this.
We may have a number of people who want to speak, we were getting background noise, so I muted everybody. I will unmute you, but please mute yourself, and when you want to speak, push the space bar. On your computer and that will unmute you, otherwise, you know, we're having a problem with the background noise.
Shouldn't they like, so they'd raise their virtual hands is typically what it.
Can raise, raise your hand also. You have thirty people.
Okay, so we're here to discuss Oak Knoll Drive and some resident issues, I don't know if the residents have a spokesman that they would like to start the discussion with. Or how you want to handle it, are you the spokesman over there, the certain, the Alba, are you the spokesperson? No, do we have a spokesperson?
Yes, my name is Carol Sanford, I'm here with my husband George, we live at fifty-eight Oak Knoll here in Hampden. Today, we're asking the town for three items pertaining the property next door to us at sixty-six. Oak Knoll Drive, owned and operated by BHN Developmental Services in Holyoke, Mass. First, we're asking for the town to put into law noise disturbance ordinance. We, the surrounding neighbors, have pictures, videos, logged police calls of our concerns today. This disturbing behavior we have witnessed has been taking place since they moved into the neighborhood approximately a year and a half ago. The noise level is so bad you can't hear your own conversations, watch TV, or be outside enjoying your own backyard without hearing. Screaming outside, yelling, moaning at the top of their lungs for hours on end. These occurrences have taken place as early as four AM, as late as eight PM. There have been other occasions, which unfortunately I don't have times on. The most recent episode was a young man hanging out the front window after he had pushed out the screen, just screaming for hours. No supervision with him at all, upon the police arriving, they too noticed this situation firsthand. They noted in their police log that the young man was not supervised, he was hanging out the window and his genitals were exposed. The same person pounced so hard on tables and decks outside that it literally shakes our house. This is unacceptable behavior to us as neighbors, we have young children who live, play, and walk the streets in this neighborhood. And they shouldn't be exposed to this behavior on an ongoing basis. Secondly, we're asking the town to insist that BHN find a better location for this commercial business. Not only for the loud and continuous disturbances it causes in the neighborhood all hours of the day and night. But mainly the safety, care, and quality of life for these adults who live there, as well as the safety of the residents and children in this neighborhood. We have tried to address these concerns with April Matoon, who is the director, program director, over the past year and a half. We received a hand-delivered letter in our mailboxes stating that she wanted to take steps to address the situation. In the fastest and most effective way possible, yet when we try and call, all we get is her voicemail and no return phone calls. Also, there is nothing being done to remedy the situation. Susan West, who is the senior vice president of BHN, said she was not made aware of this situation until the last episode on March twenty-fifth. Do we have to wait until one of our residents, their residents find a way out of the house and harms one of our children or elderly in the neighborhood? Since they are not properly supervised or contained, this is alarming to us that we have to live next to and witness this abuse. And we're demanding that the town intervenes and removes the business operation from this residential neighborhood. We weren't considered in deeming this property to become commercial or the type of residence that reside there. Living, having this business in our neighborhood is devaluing our properties. As well as our lives, and we're demanding immediate action from the town. Thirdly, we're asking the town to step in and immediately remove the most disturbing resident known as Dawson from the property. As well as new people entering the home living with such disruptive disabilities. We don't feel safe in our homes, we don't have the peace and quiet that most neighborhoods have with this business operating fifty feet from our dwelling. We wake up to screaming, we eat dinner hearing the same. We didn't purchase our home in this neighborhood to be subject to this kind of activity, and again, we ask the town to step in and take action to resolve these issues.
Thank you, um, do anyone else want to make a comment? Is, is April here?
April is not here, I'm here to speak on behalf of BHN if, if that's, if it's my turn.
Fine, yes, yes, it's your turn, it's your turn.
So, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you all. My name is Susan West, and I serve as senior vice president at Behavioral Health Network, which is also known as BHN. I have overall responsibility for the division, developmental services division. My colleague Brian Ross is also here, he serves as senior program manager and is responsible on the day-to-day basis for this division. So BHN serves those with life challenges due to mental illness, substance use disorders, or developmental disabilities. We serve more than thirty thousand people each year, many of them are your neighbors, your friends, and maybe even your family members. Across all of our programs, BHN offers support, guidance, and tools to help individuals make positive changes and live fulfilling lives. One service that BHN provides is residential homes for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The aim of these homes in general is to ensure that all residents of Massachusetts have an opportunity to live fulfilling lives in their own homes and communities. BHN is committed to ensuring quality care for residents in their homes and to assist them in being fully functioning members of the community. While also being good neighbors. As we strive to be the best neighbors possible, we always welcome constructive feedback and are happy to work with neighbors and communities. To strengthen our relationships and ensure that those we serve and those who live near them can enjoy their homes and neighborhoods. We're more than happy to engage with old neighbors on solutions that enhance the quality of life and living for all, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Does the board have any questions?
Well, I'd like to ask Miss West, what are you going to do for the specific request that they have, for instance? Would the resident known as Dawson be removed from that home and? I want to say relocated, but brought to a facility that might be more adept at dealing with him.
We're not in a, in a position right now to tell you that that is the plan in place. We are evaluating whether this house, this neighborhood, is the right fit for this group of individuals. And when we determine one way or another, we will work with. Department of Developmental Disabilities to come up with a solution.
So there are different levels, so speak, that go to, if you will, different neighborhoods that, as you said, might be a better fit, you might have residents that are. For lack of a, a different word, more peaceful or more, I have to say, would almost be invisible to the neighbors because of their different afflictions.
Yes, I think, I'm sorry.
You know, you, you see if there, if there's a different, a better fit for the neighborhood with different clientele, basically.
Right.
Possibly.
And, and you were presented as a commercial enterprise, is that accurate?
Uh, the word commercial is not accurate, this is considered as a residence, a single, it's. Considered a single-family residence, it's not a commercial. I'm sorry, what are the ground rules?
Yeah, what are the, what were the parameters that were set for you upon entering the town?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that last, what are the ground rules upon what, I'm sorry.
Upon what you came into the town originally, how long have you been here and under what conditions?
Okay, so this, this particular home has been run for a number of years, I think twenty-plus years. By the state Department of Developmental Disabilities. So it was run for, like I say, twenty years for, till about two years ago, and BHN purchased the house about two years ago.
Yeah, and that's when the stuff started. And is that when the issues arose for the neighbors, the first lady that was speaking?
Yes, it, it has been taking place for about a year and a half now.
Okay, so there's clearly been some change, is that correct?
That is correct, the, when, when we came in, we just bought our house about two and a half years ago. And when we came into the neighborhood, there were disabled people living there. But you never heard a word, all you heard was vans coming and going, taking them to appointments. But never anything like this, I could play you a video of what we hear on an ongoing basis. And our major concern is the safety of. That particular man in the home, if he's able to windows, knock-out screens. What are the chances of him getting out without anyone knowing? He was in that bathroom for at least an hour and a half before the police arrived. If he had gotten out, he was naked, you want him running around your neighborhood with all your children?
So, so back to Susan, the, clearly the, the residents have concerns, they haven't been longstanding because in the past it was working well. But now recently it has not been working well for the past year and a half, so do you have a plan that you're going to put in place so that the situation can be rectified?
Um, we are very aggressively pursuing a, an evaluation. To determine what we can do to resolve these issues, I've spoken to several of the neighbors. I've spoken to several of the neighbors and let them. And that we are working towards a resolution that will make.
And, and do we have a timeline for when that would be?
Well, the, the evaluation is going on right now, and it's a matter of, of how quickly we can make. To, you know, pull it all together.
And, and what, what would be the range of solutions, would you move the house out of town, would you just, just relocate that gentleman, would you? What are the things that you would be considering?
It could, it, it could be any number of things from, in the meantime. Managing the behavior in a better way than has been to date. Anywhere from that to moving individuals. There are times, it, all of that will take time, that's, you know, that's the only thing that I can tell you.
Living right next door to that house, I would like to have a timeframe. Because summer is coming, we are having a pool, and I would like to be able to go out into my backyard. And enjoy my backyard without listening to screaming all the time, I'm a very patient person. But nobody on this Zoom meeting would want to listen to what we've listened to. And everybody in Hampden that's on this Zoom meeting has heard what we have to hear every single day, it's not acceptable.
And I do have concerns because I tried to work with BHN, and I've also spoken to Sue. About trying to modify his behavior in our community, doing out, you know, going out twice a day for fifteen minutes. In which, if he was yelling and screaming like we have all seen, that he would be redirected in the home. And that had not happened, in fact, my husband called, told Sue, we have video of their staff workers standing on their deck. On his phone as this individual is screaming and yelling, and I think when.
as this individual is screaming and yelling. And I think when she's talking about evaluating, I think as a neighbor who I live next door, I need to know a timeframe. I've lived in this community almost 30 years. I've worked very hard, and I'm, I, we just don't want to tolerate this. It's one individual.
Right.
And I just don't have, I don't, excuse me, I don't have faith in BHN. They make promises, and within a few days, they do not follow through with what I, as a neighbor, said, okay, I'm willing to work with them, but they haven't fulfilled their ability to work with us as neighbors. And I just don't have faith anymore. And I think that's why, as neighbors, we've come to our select board to help us ratify this question.
Back, back to, since you're, since you're the representative of the company, do you, um, do you think that a month is enough time for you to come up with a plan to resolve this problem?
Sue? Sorry, did you say, did you think a month is enough to resolve this problem?
See, this is what we put up with.
This is the trouble. This is the trouble that happens along.
All right, well. Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm not willing to give you a, a firm timeframe.
Of course not.
No, because I can't. I
If this is causing so much trouble, if this was living next door to you, what would your expectations be? What are you willing to put up with? We've been living with this for a year and a half, and we get nothing. They're supervised. I have pictures of the gate, the beautiful gate that you people put in, that is open almost every single day of the week. How are these patients being confined? They're not.
Okay, all right, now let's listen. Don't get anywhere by yelling at each other. We know what the residents have, have the concerns. They've expressed them very articulately. We know what Sue's position is because she has also expressed herself. I think what we want to try to do is come up with a resolution. Um, it seems to me that, um, if you, if Sue, how does the board feel? Do you, do you think that we should, John, do you have any?
I think one thing you have to be careful of is that, yeah, Don, I know you're recused on this, but we're also slightly limited in what we can do. There are certain, this home has been here quite a while, and they can go in neighborhoods, but they do have to be respectful neighbors. But there's also some, in some cases, little the town can do. That is, they can't close the home. I cannot be done. I'm sorry?
We're not asking anybody to close the home.
Oh, well, there was one thing, but I think what Mrs. West was saying, repurpose to a different, and I don't want to use the clientele, but a different category, if you will, for the home that might be less disruptive to the neighborhood. I think that's what your main concern is, disruption that the current home is causing. I think if you talk to some people that have been here 20 something years, they didn't see that problem 20 years ago.
No, it's basically one client. Excuse me for interrupting.
No, you're right. And that's why I asked at the beginning, is there a plan to, first off, let's move that one client if they want to go through.
There's no plans.
As I was saying, if they want to, go ahead, and then reevaluate what they're doing for better training, whatever. Nobody wants to sit in their back deck all summer and listen to disruption next door. Whether it's this home, whether it's a bunch of college kids on the other side having a big party, you still deserve to have a quiet in your backyard. But I think your point is right, as Mrs. Glover said. Wes, can we get an agreement from you that the one disruptive client that, to be quite honest, has a history of exposing himself, moved out right away? Is that something I think we can enforce? You know, when we have a documented case from the police, this is a person who exposed, we have a neighborhood with children, we don't want that. And that would go a long way to, I think, building the neighbors' trust in that something's going to be done by BHN. Am I correct, or?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So Sue, Sue, what do you think? Can you, can you make that commitment?
It's complicated. That's what I'm telling.
And what can you do for our community? What can you do to ratify this problem then? It will, within a timeframe, not, not this, and, and I can't give you a timeframe. You are a very smart, educated woman who has probably been in this business a very long time. We are asking for your help. We have reached out to you.
Yes, and I abs, and I've told you that I'm working with you, that I don't
But we need a timeframe.
You're not giving.
It's, it's impossible to give you an exact timeframe because there are so many moving parts and so many different constituents that are involved.
It's not acceptable from us as neighbors. It's not acceptable.
I'm very sorry that I can't give.
I have a question. I have a question. I'd like to know why the town has a business and a residential district when it's obviously a business. They're making money on it. It's BHN. It's a huge business. Why the town allows this? And how many are they going to allow in? And what level of people do we allow into our community? Um, I think the, uh, the community should have way more input on what comes in to our community. And this last episode, it, it was, uh, it was shocking. It was shocking, and I think we actually averted a tragedy. I mean, you hear it in the news all the time, and I think, um, you know, calling the police and having the police come as quick as they did, um, may have averted a real tragedy. And I think the town should be responsible for letting these people in.
Well, Ms. Glover, I'd like to see, can you keep this on the agenda so we follow up and perhaps, uh, Mr. Markle can reach out to Mrs. West tomorrow?
I was going to suggest that we, we set a, uh, we have an agenda on the 19th and the 26th, and maybe till the 26th, put it back on the agenda to see what, uh, if any changes have been made that will, um, satisfy the, uh, the problems in, in the neighborhood.
Right. So, so for Sue West, if you can, uh, work to facilitate the relocation of this gentleman, and if you could send us a written, send to Bob Markle either through phone or through a written document, the progress that you are making on a weekly basis, so that we can see that something is being done. Um, and then we will put this on the agenda for the 26th. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Markle?
Yeah.
For the 26th, um, and all the people that are here tonight are welcome to come back and listen to the update. Um, and I would also suggest to Ms. West that she, um, develop some kind of a, of a relationship with the neighbors so that they feel that they are being valued, that their interests are being, being taken to heart, um, and that they are going to be able to affect change. I mean, I don't think you, 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 people don't work well together unless they open their hearts and their minds to each other, and I think that that would be helpful in this process. So with that, I think we will, um, close this sectional. If anybody else has anything to say pertinent that they want to say, not the same what we've heard already. Um, and I hope this has been at least a step in the right direction to get us to a resolution of this.
I have one question. So the Select Board has nothing to do with helping us resolve this. So basically, BHN can just keep dragging it on and on and on, and we, as taxpayers in your town, which I've been here almost 30 years, never had an issue, cannot support us as residents?
Because our, our only option left is to call the police department and make a complaint on disturbing the peace, which there is a law, every single time that this gentleman is being loud, which is warm weather is coming, and unless they move this gentleman, there is going to be an issue, and the police department isn't something that they should have to deal with this every single day. But I'm not going to sit in my backyard and have them disturb my peace every single day without making a call. And so, what I was saying is to put this as immediate action, not we're working on it. I'm sorry, that's not acceptable.
Okay.
But still, how does the town allow them to come in?
We've asked Ms. West to facilitate the movement of this individual.
Business.
To, to, to give us, of the, of the, of the man that you wanted removed to start with, okay? And report with, to Mr. Markle or to the board on a weekly basis of the progress that she's making. We have it on the agenda for the 26th. The other thing that I'm going to suggest is that the, um, we have our health agent visit the property to be sure that it's in compliance with all of our health rules and regulations. We can do that. Um, I also encourage you to contact the police anytime you have a concern about safety, uh, because that's their role, whether it's, you know, somebody on Main Street or somebody in a neighborhood. So, um, I would encourage you to do that. This is a very difficult situation to work with. Um, and I would also request that, um, Ms. West look into relocating the home if she thinks that that, that's appropriate. That's what I have. Anything else, John?
Well, one thing I said before is that because we have a documented case where the man was exposing himself, I think the police do have a little more power to, so to speak, mark the guy out of town. And I would encourage, I would encourage Mr. Markle to work with Mrs. West on that. And I think that's something, because the police report is clear that that happened, I think it does take it up another level.
Thank you.
As I said before, move him out, reevaluate where we are. You said, he's, I don't know, you didn't throw a number, 75% of the problem, 80%, whatever, and then see better control of the neighborhood. And let's all be good neighbors. That's what town, the town has been, as we said, this place has been here 30-something years, and we've never had this level of interest, if you will, from the neighborhood.
How many of these houses can move into our town? Can they move 12, 15, 20? I mean, it could be next to you.
Could be. Well, I've got the school next to me, so I've got screaming all over the time.
Yeah, it's saying school kids.
No, but it just, I don't mean to be flip about it, but that's a planning board question. It is.
Let's get them involved. Let's get them involved.
Reach out to them.
We also
Hold us about this. This is definitely a change. This is a business in a residential neighborhood. That's what we should be concentrating on. Why does the town let businesses move into residential neighborhoods?
I'm, I'm not going to speak 100%, but I'm going to tell you, I think there's little the town can do for something like this. It's a mental health question. Unfortunately, Don, who probably has a little more experience from his work at the state, could answer this better, but he's kind of recusing this because of where he is. Let Mr. Markle research this, and I think the answer is going to be.
The, the, the answer is that the, uh, courts in Massachusetts, about 20 years ago, maybe a little longer, issued a decision saying that, uh, homes for those like, uh, those who are disabled like this one, um, can be cited in communities and bypass local reg, and bypassing local regulations. In other words, these kinds of activities are actually there in a lot of different communities, and, uh, the, the, uh, local zoning and other, uh, uh, regulations don't apply. So it's, it's really from that court case, it's about 20 years ago, that a lot of these group homes were cited, and, um, there isn't much that the town can do about it in terms of, uh, you know, purchasing, uh, the land and setting up the home. Obviously, there's a problem here that has to get resolved.
I have one more point to make. Um, if this unfortunately continues, I don't think I could sell my house. I think this should be, my taxes should be lowered because it's degrading my home.
Right.
And I don't feel like I could sell my house at this point with this going on. So is that going to be taken into consideration when we reevaluate, the assessor comes around? I'd like the assessor to come around when this guy's outside.
Bring it up to the assessors.
Okay, well, we thank you for coming forward. We will keep on top of this. It will be on our agenda regularly. You're welcome to come back anytime, once you're ready.
So you, as our Select Board, don't give BHN a timeframe of having some kind of resolution for the rest of the neighborhood?
Well, I think we said we were going to have them report back in a week and let us know where they stand, and then from there we will know what else we have to do, if there is anything we can do. But as Mr. Markle said, you know, our hands, the state has told us what we have to do, which is keep this house in town for now.
So I think that was our goal, though. It's not so much the house. It's this one resident who's disruptive to our neighborhood.
Well, that's why I said, I think, you know, by Mr. Markle working perhaps with the police department, if there can be something done for, so to speak, noticing this one person out of town, I know it puts a burden on BHN, but that honestly isn't our problem. Um, I think that will go a long way towards solving the issue. And let him work with the police and say, hey, here we have a notified case. I got your officer. This guy was naked outside. What can we do? And start with that.
We'll continue to work on this. You are entitled to the quiet enjoyment of your property.
And how aggressive is BHN going to be with trying to work with us? Because up until this point, they have not worked with us. They don't return phone calls. We've, I made a personal plan with a lady from BHN that was never followed through. I told Sue West the plan. Sue West said, oh yeah, that sounds great. 10 and 1 o'clock, the individual go outside, be redirected if he yells. That did not get followed through. There has to be some kind of definite resolution and timeframe. This can be going on for months and months and months.
And it has.
Well, our timeframe right now is one week, so we'll hear back from her in one week, and you're more than welcome to come, or it's 20, it's
3 weeks.
26. Did I say 3?
Well, he said 26. That's 3 weeks.
And 3, 3 weeks, 3 weeks is a long time, and I think anybody on the board that was, listened to that for 3 weeks wouldn't want to tolerate it. 3 weeks, sounds like a short period of time, but it's not when that's right next door to you.
No, that's why I said, I think we should keep it on the agenda for
I think what we said was she would, she would call us every week, but we would be on, it would be a regular item on the agenda.
So she is going to, she's going to call you every week?
Yeah. With If she doesn't contact us, we will contact her.
If you could hear any of that, that is what we listen to on an ongoing basis.
Much louder.
Oh. Okay, guys, we'll try to help you all who can. Well, thank you for coming.
That was a guy, or it was a player playing a tape. Was that live or was that a tape?
Was that a tape that you were playing or was that live?
That was, that was a video that I captured of him hanging out the window at, uh, what time? Tuesday at 6:49 PM.
Unbelievable.
So this is what we listen to. We have dinner to this instead of nice enjoyable music. This is what we have to listen to. We get woken up at 4:15 in the morning listening to this. I work from home, and I conduct a lot of conferences through Zoom and WebEx with my windows closed. My manager is asking me what this noise is. It's unacceptable. And I know you say, yes, we'll address it in 3 weeks, but in 3 weeks, is Sue West going to say, well, we're still working on it? No, we demand better results.
Okay, well, we've charged, uh, Mr. Markle to reach out, get some answers, report back to our board. Mrs. Glover is going to be on top of this and is going to be on our agenda for next week.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Academy Hall painting. Uh, we have, uh, solicited bids from four entities, two have submitted bids, and, uh, the low bid right now, um, is $12,440.
Yeah, fortunately it's under the bid amount. Uh, we did a walk-around last week of Linda Kravitz, Wendell, myself, and Mark Langone, just to make sure, because this is a building near this town property. Did find a window, storm window that had been broken out, probably by the wind, as we've certainly seen some pretty intensive wind lately. One question I had was, uh, the fire escape on the back. And so when, uh, Bob and I met with Larry Tull this morning, we did ask him, Mark did confirm that he does do certification of fire escapes. By law, that has to be done every five years. So he's going to go ahead and provide that service to us, which we can pay for out of the Academy Hall maintenance budget. It's not terribly, probably 400 or 500. So verify that it is appropriate because we do have people going up and down.
So this, uh, this offer provides a scraping of all loose paint. So this, uh, this offer provides a scraping of all loose paint, uh, paint chips, caulking and patching. Uh, primer, oil-based primer, and two coats of, uh, uh, exterior white satin latex paint. Uh, Sherwin-Williams, which is a quality brand. And, uh, also two coats of, uh, porch and floor enamel, uh, on, on the porch there.
Now, is he aware of the potential for lead paint there and he had a.
Yes, he is.
Okay. I mean, that's key, sign off, and where it's not our problem, then he signed off on it. I'd like a couple of references from both if we could, before we start up. We have mine.
Difference from the other one. Yeah, it's ten thousand, a little more than ten thousand, less.
Right, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning.
Did he give any timeline for when to do this, by the way?
Well, we can't start till July first. Got to appropriate the money anyhow.
Yeah, um, he did say that he's filling up his schedule and would like to have a decision.
Be good to get him on, on his calendar.
Eric Weiss is here. He's on the, uh, has joined the meeting and, um. He will answer any questions about. What is being discussed and planned among, uh, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, uh, Wilbraham, Hampton, and Munson. Regarding, uh, sharing a health agent. And also the discussions that are underway about, uh, public health nurses and so forth. So, are you still on, Eric? Eric?
Now I'm not muted anymore. One would think. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, do you want me to just talk about what is going on, or do you want to ask me specific questions first?
Talk.
Overview.
That was easy. Um, so there is a grant opportunity through the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts. To get access to up to three hundred thousand dollars a year to support the development of shared health arrangements between communities, cross-jurisdictional arrangements. We, I in particular, have worked on other cross-jurisdictional arrangements, police, health, fire, uh, emergency services, ambulance services. In my role as the manager of regional municipal services for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I'm very comfortable in, in these discussions. And I know that every one of these is unique, and every one of these has to take on the characteristics of the communities that it's part of. There is not a one-size-fits-all type arrangement that works for everybody. I do know that one of the challenges being faced by these towns is the, um, coming retirement of Lori McCool. Who I believe she has said August or so is when she's going to retire. She's done an incredible job. She's a good person. She's done really well for all these towns. Historically, the towns have engaged her services on an individual basis. Each town contracted separately with her. Um, I know that it's been bandied about amongst the towns that one day we should look at a shared arrangement potentially. Um, by that, by that being that you could hire somebody and share all the costs between the towns. Um, and you could delineate what services this person performs and doesn't perform on behalf of the town. Like I said, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's, it's very much developed in the sense of what the towns want to do. So first of all, um, I got on behalf of the towns, I'm working with the towns on what's called the District Local Technical Assistance Grant. Which is something funded directly through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, in which representatives from the four towns and Lori McCool have already begun talking about what this might look like or could look like. Um, if the town chooses to do it. So that's a really good first step anyway, that there was recognition amongst the towns. And secondly, um, the state, through the Department of Public Health, is offering these very significant grants to help fund. Fair enough cost, for lack of a better term, however you would arrange, or however you would describe what it would take to create something like this. And the cost it might incur to have a regional health director or regional health agent, um, et cetera, somebody who, um, could help with bookkeeping, somebody could help with inspections, all the different responsibilities. If there's one thing we've learned through the COVID crisis, unfortunately, is that local boards of health have to be prepared for almost any emergency that can come the town's way. And I think local boards of health have done an incredibly good job with what they've tried to do on behalf of our towns in this time of COVID. And I think we need to reinforce, um, how the towns are going to be prepared going forward. And I know everybody in this room appreciates that and it supports me in that. That's not, we said. So the, um, the bottom line here is that the grant opportunity is a unique grant opportunity. In which a submission is made to D P H, which has already been made. Which then gives us a runway to have the internal discussions that we need to have about who's going to support and in what way. So they give us from now until the end of June to have a discussion, um, to get the letters of support from the four towns. As to how we're going to proceed and what we're going to do. Um, it is always up to the town as to where they want to participate. I know there's at least a member of the select board in Hampden that is asking some questions and they're, have every right to ask questions. I am not here to tell you that we're going to create this huge, large health district. I'm here to tell you that we're looking at something that will work for the towns to share in the way they want to share it. And that's what my goal is, to create a memorandum of understanding or an agreement between the towns that will let them look at this in the best ways possible to meet your needs. Um, I am comfortable in the, in, in working with the towns in this way, and I think this grant opportunity is something that is really unique. We, we offering this type of money, i.e. three hundred thousand dollars a year, up to three hundred thousand dollars a year, is unique. We rarely see that kind of money coming out of the state to support transitional changes like this. I also think that the town, um, has an opportunity, your town and the other towns around you have an opportunity with the pending retirement of Lori. To look at things in a somewhat of a new way and figure out, well, what you've gotten halfway home doing. You've already been sharing a health inspector. This just formalizes. So that's a pretty good summary of where we're at. I've sat in with Bob, I've sat in with the leaders in the other communities. I've sat in with Lori McCool already. Um, I'm not coming at this blindly. I don't want you, anybody to think that, but I do think it's a really good opportunity and one that really needs to be explored.
So the three, the three hundred thousand is to set up the, to do all the, uh, preliminary work and set up the, the, uh, I don't know, the inter, inter-town public health system. We want to call it that.
Um, well, I would call it shared health services. That's easier.
Okay.
The three hundred thousand, the majority of that money would go towards the shared regional positions. That's what the budget that was put together. That's the money that the towns would have the toughest time coming up with. That would be the new money that would be toughest to come up with.
Oh, you're covering our annual cost, basically. Putting it toward our annual cost.
Yeah, for the shared, two shared positions, basically.
Okay.
And for how many years does that money, is that a one-year?
That money is good for three years, minimum.
Three years minimum. There's a runway right now of two to three months to work out some of the logistics. And then there's three years of trying to work out, um, three years of the funding that would be in place at the level, I think it came out to two hundred and eighty-something by the end of the budget. Um, that would go to support the regional positions. And in the interim, part of what would be developed would be the regional body that would help oversee. Where representatives from the different towns would get together. It could be select board, board of health. I know in some towns it's the same. You know, the board of health is the board, the board of selectmen is the board of health. So we can work out all those details of who logistically is in charge of what through this whole process. And I, I look forward to doing that. I work with towns all the time. I know that it's a challenge to work with towns, but I enjoy that challenge.
So they, so they would pay the salary for three years for, uh, the public health nurse and a public health agent, let's say, right?
Yes.
And that personally be shared by the three or four towns, however many of us join.
Yes.
And then after three years, we would have created some kind of formula of, or why if, if they spend twenty percent of their town in Hampden, we would pay twenty percent.
You got it, something like that.
So similar to the veterans district that we have now, that we're apportioned by that.
Yep.
My question is, do you think, Eric, it's realistic that we get this done? Because if Lori is leaving in August, and I've talked to her, she's leaving in August. Can we get something up and running of the board? We say yes, the other three towns say yes. Do we have a realistic chance of having our town serviced by somebody new?
Um, first of all, my answer to that is yes, which is a very optimistic yes, but I'll tell you why I'm being optimistic. We have everybody who's focused on it, that needs to focus on it, focusing on it right now. We were already through the D L T A process, the other grant process, bringing those people together to talk about this. So if we can get the D P H grant plus the D L T A, that's the maximum amount of resources we have available to throw at this to make, to move it ahead. We already have a pretty good working M O U model that we developed for the Long Meadow, East Long Meadow arrangement that never materialized. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel to create an M O U either. So I'm feeling positive that we can get it done.
I don't see a downside.
People to work industriously at the level, the community level, to participate, to share what they, what they see is important to their town and what they need. And, you know, I think that. It would be great.
Once it is established and it goes for the three years, then is there, can we opt out of that arrangement or is that a difficult thing to do?
Um, the answer is, um, whatever criteria get put into the memorandum of understanding that's between the towns. That allows, of course, anytime you went to any original arrangement, there's an opt-out clause in the contract. Or in the understanding, but the rules by that would be developed by the group that gets together, whether it's, you have to notify a year ahead of time or whatever it is. But I think that once, my experience with, um, shared arrangements is that once they're up and running and moving in the direction that towns direct them to move in. So the towns get what they want, then there's, um, support and the energy there to keep it going in the way that is beneficial. If it's just thrust upon you by somebody else, then of course you're not going to take it. This is meant to come from the towns. Um, as something that you can use to, um, to your benefit for a long time to come.
Nancy has a raise here.
Uh, Nancy? Are you muted?
Hi, um, Mr. Weiss, could you please explain D L T A and M O U because that's definitely jargon. And the majority of people listening tonight don't know your jargon.
Um, hopefully I do.
Um, yeah, you would.
Um, D L T A, it's kind of scary to see myself on TV, by the way. Um, D L T A is what's, it's a state program which is called District Local Technical Assistance. It is money that comes to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission as a regional planning agency. To work with the communities in our service region, which are the forty-three communities in Hampshire and Hampden County. To work with them on things that are important to them, whether it's a cross-jurisdictional arrangement, it could be a land use issuing, it could be a rewrite of the town bylaws. It could be the sharing of police services. So D L T A is District Local Technical Assistance. The four towns already applied for that, and we're already, um, working with the towns on that. Oh, with, what was the other thing? An M O U, a memorandum of understanding is, that's the agreement created by and between the towns to sort of govern what this group is going to do. So that is where the town gets to put itself forward and say, we want X, Y, and Z in the service over us to make sure everything is right. And that's where you can get the protections that you want out of the.
Okay, thank you so much.
What do you, what do you need us to do?
Well, Bob is a contributor to the regional group. Lori McCool is. If there's anybody who wants to step up as well. To be part of the regional group, let us know. We'll add you to the discussions. Right now, we're meeting via Zoom. Um, to start moving things ahead, and that's where we're going to be moving from. So I would, I would welcome at least one other participant, if you, if somebody wants to volunteer and step up.
Need a pharmacist down there?
Love Derek.
He loves them.
He loves them.
I recommend Don.
All right. Yeah, we, this, by the way, began, uh, as a series of discussions among administrators and managers in the region. And in those discussions, uh, it was suggested, well, why don't we talk to Eric at P V P C? We did. And he said, uh, we still have some D L T A money available. If you folks write a letter. Uh, uh, the director may very well allocate some D L T A money, uh, to me to work with you. So we did that. We got the D L T A, uh, funding, and we were thinking, well, we'll just go along and, and continue the planning that we had started. Then this Department of Public Health funding, uh, opportunity developed, and so that's how we got to where we are.
You need a letter from us, is that it?
I will by June thirtieth. I will need a letter of support for the D P H grant. Um, I'll be asking for it sooner than that, but that's their drop dead date. But I think it's, I think it's a really, um. Beneficial opportunity to create something the towns can share in the way they want to share it.
After you go through the study, if, if we decided, well, we wanted the health agent, but we weren't so sure about the nurse, can we do one and not the other?
Uh, it depends on what we put in the agreement.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, and I appreciate, um, moving me to this meeting and coming back, and looks like you got your hands full tonight, so I appreciate your time.
All right, everybody, take care.
Thank you, you too.
Highway Garage Extension.
Had a meeting this morning, John, myself, Larry Tuttle, and, um, uh, Mark met this morning to talk about the expansion project.
The new Davenport Highway Building. Thank you, Don, for making up.
All right, we're going to get out of the Tom meeting, aren't we?
We had discussed earlier, uh, purchasing the steel where prices are rising daily. And, and just stockpiling the steel so we can get the project going and saving money in that way. Uh, apparently the I beams, uh, are in high demand, and, uh, so we're going to go ahead with that.
Verifying that the steel, it's on state contracts, so we don't have to go.
Yeah, the, the.
Which we're pretty sure, Larry's pretty sure.
Yeah, there are two, there are two vendors, and one is definitely on state contract. The other one he's going to verify.
U S A steel?
Yes, yes. But not Bethlehem.
And do we need any authorization to do that, or, I mean, isn't that a, a big expenditure? And we can have all that steel sitting here and then.
What if. Time meeting says, I want to give the other three hundred thousand.
Right.
Pretty sure we'll make money on selling the steel.
We can sell the steel and make some bucks.
Well, that's what they all said, but. I got a bridge.
It's not going, that market is not going down anytime soon.
It seems, it seems to me that we're not in the business of buying something to sell it, so.
You wanted to be sure.
Buying something to use it, or whatever.
Right, but you want to be sure that we're not caught short, and we're, our consultant says you're not going to be caught with stuff you can't use.
Fire any farmer requests? That's the truck, right?
Yeah. So let's, we went through that last week.
It's the fifty-six thousand.
Right.
What?
Hello?
Yeah, does Nancy still?
What's this?
Let's just go to that. We're just going to go to Tom meeting, right?
The truck is going to go to the town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Has it, has it, has it gotten the endorsement of the Capitol Planning Committee?
No.
Well, shouldn't that be a first step?
Uh, that'll be, uh, on our list.
And they will do that in light of all the other projects that are coming down.
Well, we're, we're, we're coming up with the five-year list. In fact, tomorrow night, uh, I think will be an important, uh, step in that direction.
Uh, Main Street Water.
Still waiting for, we had a email back from Peter that they were putting the punishing wraps on the report.
And it does look good for using some of the Rescue Act funding. Which, uh, you can use in a limited way for air, infrastructure, water, sewer, broadband.
It could be that we could capture some of that money and use it off at the, the cost of the product.
Would broadband, would broadband have anything to do with, with anything? The broad, no, broadband, I mean, there's always a lot of complaints about the, the, the emails, I mean, the internet service out here and the TV and spectrum and everything else. Is there anything?
We're going to have a lot of money. Maybe we should look into that.
I would follow what, if you look what Warham has done.
They're doing their own, they're doing their own.
Yeah.
But I mean, when people always say, and I thought, actually Jim Smith gave a pretty good recap of that, and. That you're not going to find Comcast coming in and wanting to buy electric. There's just too much investment. And also they get into. If you recall, and Bob may have seen this in other parts of Mass a couple of years ago, there was a, they were exchanging territories somewhere else. And it required them to also plan for switching territories in mass, because they're playing such a, such a huge chessboard. We are not even a pawn, or a full pawn, nothing, right? But we're below that.
We're below a pawn.
So there's no, there's no opportunity for another one to come in. The series isn't, uh, you can get the dish, you can try getting fiber to your, I believe, Verizon does offer files.
Right. But you can also, I think, project that, uh, cable, TV, and more and more people are going to cut the cord.
I did see that, and then somebody made a great point, maybe Ted, that if you're seeing decreased speed, sometimes it is just equipment. And by requesting an updated cable modem or something like that, you are going to see an. And by requesting an updated cable modem or something like that, you are going to see an increase. If some people have had their cable modem for three or four years, there's a better one that they'll provide you. They're not going to offer it because they're not in the money. That, who can demand it based on the fact that you rent, you rent that?
Any report?
Well, we have two reports uh, that we're waiting for. Uh, I plan on meeting with um, Craig Ruffest and Maddie Pixley, either Wednesday or Thursday. I'd like to go to print at the beginning of the week. I did speak with Carol or emailed with Carol Fitzgerald. The warrant, if it's not completed, it can go in as a draft, but she said the budget is nowhere near completion.
No, they need our numbers for that.
Now, we've used a draft in the past, but I mean, they have their meeting tonight, I think.
Yeah, but still.
The total of this draft that they saw, it's currently three million dollars less than last year. And that was, they would say, that's great. Because you don't have any salaries in there.
Right, right.
Well, we've done, we've done it where everything has been on the green sheet in the past. We've done it where everything has pretty much been in the green sheet anyhow, which is better because everybody in town gets the green sheet. We only print, can't probably three hundred town reports roughly?
That's about what.
Yeah, yeah, so.
My report uh, is at the top of the list tomorrow. It'll be. It'll be.
We'll see.
Craig did send the um, copy of uh, what he proposes to cover. So I mean, I want to get it to the printer for his reason for visiting. So.
Uh, so next one, we've got to vote to close the town meeting, or?
Yeah, and I did see, one quick thing, uh, we don't have that truck on the warrant.
I saw that too.
Yeah, so.
Truck on the warrant.
Yeah. Fire department vehicle, too, yeah.
I don't think you put the truck on the warrant, too. We did a recommendation of the planning committee until, until we vote on it. I, we haven't taken a vote on the truck. Have we taken a vote and just flipped the truck out? I didn't take a vote.
I have no problem putting, we have a request from the fire department that we should honor in our role. If we choose to take no action on or recommend against it, we can all through the town meeting.
I, I think that.
Should we wait till next week then to close the warrant? Just to have them in there, so unofficial.
What's our date? Posted, he got that from Eva?
Oh, we have, we have plenty of time. Uh, May tenth, uh, a May tenth town meeting. Um, and we're, we're only required to post a week in advance.
The year is the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're also.
We've got time, the next week's the twelfth, right, so we can.
Hmm. All right, all right. Uh, any correspondence of note, other than the people sending in about their raises and stuff? Uh, what about this?
Now Craig had put something out, whether it was on Facebook, I think it was, asking people for pictures. I think uh, the majority of those are from Craig, but there are some that are from residents.
What about this letter from uh, Mr. Matthews from the planning board?
Oh, so that was going to be my report.
Oh, okay, so.
So at the selectmen's meeting, sorry, at the planning board meeting, uh, obviously a lot of it was Amararesco dealing with requirements for solar of the land. But one thing that did come up was stormwater. He asked John, you know, are they coming up with a stormwater modification to the bylaw? But they are. Somebody asked, uh, was there something with a new parking where they covered the uh, septic field in the back?
Yes.
And John checked into it and said, yes, they should have filed. You know, because you're probably familiar with the bylaw.
Right.
That increase in impervious surface did require review, if you will. So he's putting us on notice that, yes, he thinks there was a violation and it should go to the process manual, if that means we just forward this to uh, Wendell and ask the owner to update their stormwater plan for all that, basically. Good opportunity to see, okay, this is, let's go through the process.
Anything else?
Sure.
CPA meeting, meeting again this week. Uh, again, I talked about the different articles we have coming forward. The last thing we're waiting for is a report uh, the cost for the piping for Memorial Park. Uh, probably be, did I talk to Mark? He thinks that's something that Highway can do the actual physical labor as part of their normal work because they're responsible for major projects in park. They would look for CPA to provide the money for the piping, the stone. Basically what we, you would expect for curtain drain, which is, they have an excavator already they plan on using, so they would dig the trench, put in the pipe, bring the stone into the drainage and.
I think you were at the meeting, weren't you?
Yeah, and go forward like that, much like you do around your house.
Anything else?
That was the only one I went to, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I, I did join the library, I talked to them and they, um, you know, have concerns, obviously, about the, about the town's report. Um, and um, the data of the COVID in, from the health department, it fluctuates because we're so small that we change categories quickly. When you get like one person has it, four people in the household, it's pretty similar to another category, but there, there's not a lot of, the the uh, the vaccination programs that they've run up and have done well, um, people are very appreciative when they come and look at it, look at it as a way to get out of the house. So that was them.
Also under correspondence, we have a letter from the Hampden County Regional Retirement Board saying that they're going to be transparent and uh, as an addendum to that, the chairman and treasurer resigned for our, for our request.
Do we get a rebate?
And uh, we'll move, we'll be moving on to the other members. Mr. Martin, town administrator report. Yes. Well, I mentioned that I did receive a call from the DEP office in Springfield asking if the town would like to join with East Long Meadow uh, in a grant that would uh, review all cover, all culverts in both communities. I said, well, you know, he said, the reason why two towns should go together for this kind of grant is that it would be stronger. He said it's going to be very competitive. Uh, it's going to come out uh, in the range of three hundred thousand dollars to do the work. And he said, you want to be as competitive as you can, and having two towns together uh, in an application would make it stronger. So I said, fine, you know, what, uh, so uh, I mentioned this last, last week, we'll, we'll know probably in June whether or not the application would be. As we said before, to help with our stormwater, our whole stormwater.
I think we talked about that last week, yeah, like, would they, want to kick that over to Gary to see if there's any impact, I mean, on the budget request this year, or just something we could probably address in the fall after we see it play out.
Okay, we already talked with uh, Eric about the PVPC effort, uh, planning committee. Incidentally, um, we're running into a problem with uh, Zoom and with the various boards and committees and uh, right now, I'm doing uh, four boards and committees, uh, postings and and basically setting up the Zoom system. Uh, there are limits to what I can do and uh, get it done efficiently. So I'm uh, thinking, John and I talked earlier today about having a training session for administrative assistance.
Yeah.
Um, so that they can set up uh, Zoom conferences themselves. What tends to be hap, what seems to be happening now is that boards will have a meeting in the auditorium, allow some residents to come in and sit there in person, and also uh, run, run the Zoom conference simultaneously. That's probably the future here.
It is, and you look at when like the planning board meeting we were at.
Yeah.
And I'm sure conservation is probably the same, because they're so paper intensive and showing a plan, you can't do it all by Zoom.
Yeah.
You know, you couldn't screen share, okay, here's the subdivision. I can't quite see that, you know? There's a picture of a turtle there, Ted, I can't see, you know, so it's going to be a hybrid. It's just, that's the nature of things going forward.
But this bit of service, this should learn how to do it.
I think so, now that we've made the decision. And also, we talked about the actual Zoom thing itself. Either we find a multi, a multi-site license or something like that, or give each board their own license. Because look at tonight, advisory's meeting, Carol's using her personal Zoom account.
Right.
Because we're using the town Zoom account here. So it's uh, the cost is maybe fifteen a month.
Yes, it's, it's inexpensive. We have auth, I've authorized the Conservation Commission to have their own copy, and I said, month to month, because I wasn't sure how long.
Hmm.
Uh, we would be able to pay for it with, with COVID money.
Hmm.
So they are one example, the advisory committee has Carol's copy that they use. I think the next step is for the planning board to have their copy and to do the training. I did get a call today from town council uh, conveying the message that the state does want a presence of a town official for this pre-hearing, the first of two hearings regarding the police, the police patrolmen switching unions from IVPO to a second union. I don't understand why a town official is, is to be involved in this, but I agreed to do it. It's going to be over Zoom.
Hmm.
Don't have to go to Boston. And uh, it'll be on the seventh, so. Rest of these items here.
What's your role?
I don't know, just, you know, uh, I probably won't run the video. I'll just let the, let the audio run and do some other work. Um, the rest of these items, we've already talked about, Academy Hall, a small bridge program, uh, we expect that we will be getting a response on the grant request uh, for uh, thirty-one thousand five hundred to do the design to replace that bridge on East Main Street over Big Brook or East Brook, I forget which one. Um, and so that's, that's the report, uh, Mr. John. All right, anything else for the board?
Well, I saw that Mr. Merkel, you, you came up with a um, evaluation.
I did, yes.
Which is, which is.
It's been talked about, so I, I.
Is there a difference between, I know it should label it manager, is there a difference for administrator or? Okay.
We can tweak it, yeah. That's what I, I gave it to you to take a look at.
I think you have one like in five different towns.
I do, I, I, you know, I don't know if I can find that one again. I have so many of them.
You can have fun and take copies. Um, so do we, we want to review this and?
Review and see if you uh, want to make any recommendations and then uh, it can be used uh, not only for your town administrator, but for other department heads and other employees.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good, thank you.
Anything else? Welcome to the gym.